22nd of July, 2024. We'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands as one nation, indivisible, red flag, and just as broad. All right, we'll go into our agenda, and our first item up is the welcoming of special guests, our elected officials that represent the town of Farmington in the Legislature of Hartford. I'd like to welcome State Representative Francis Cooley, who's joining us for the first time, and our State Representative Mike Dabico, who's joining us for more than his first time. Welcome you all, gentlemen, and thank you for coming to see us tonight. I know my colleagues have lots of questions. I'll open it up to Superintendent Greeter first to start.
Sure, so thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your service, and how you support our schools in this region. It's so important, and we appreciate all your work. I'll bring up just a few items that are important to us here in Farmington. We are, and I know you've heard this before, Mike, because you've been here before, but we are experiencing a number of mandates in school districts, many of which are not funded. So there are legislative priorities, and they go through committee, and they get passed, but I'm not sure if an analysis of the cost, and the cost could be just the number of hours our staff have to now create a new report, or have a new committee, or it could be a number of things. It also can be materials that we now have to purchase, or we have to add staffing because of a new mandate. Many of these mandates come quickly, and we have to, right after the session, implement on July 1 of any particular year. So it's very challenging for us to have the number of mandates we've had in recent years. You know, a lot of superintendents are starting to count how many mandates there are every year, because it's overwhelming to us, and I know they all have good intent. I think that everyone is trying to do the best for the children of Connecticut and each of the areas that are represented. I completely believe that. I think it's just trying to find a way of managing all of the asks and the wants that come from across Connecticut, and trying to say, how much can a school district or our school districts actually handle within a year, a particular year? So I'll go over just a few of, a few examples. They're not all the examples, but a few that were recent examples. So one of them, again, all well-intended, but they're not well-funded, would be the extended age of special education eligibility for transition services, from an 18 to 21 situation to an 18 to 22-year-old mandate. And then, in the past, students would exit local programming at their 22nd birthday. So that change had happened from 21 to 22, but the new law states that we must provide services until the end of the school year, even if an individual turns 22 in September. So those services remain, and they have, it shifts, in many ways, the responsibility from the state to now local school districts. And again, well-intended, but then we didn't receive any additional funding for that. So that then became our responsibility. We had not budgeted for it. The transition happened right away. We did not budget for it. We're budgeting now in the next year, but we did not have that funding in the first year of the transition. The next example is the right-to-read legislation, which mandates a very narrow set of programmatic options that require school districts to shift to new reading programs, which not only costs funding for materials, but also, we want to provide adequate training to our faculty and staff when we implement something new. Although a grant is available, and we have applied for that grant, it does not cover the full cost of this mandate. And especially for a school district like Farmington, who consistently receives low funding due to state-level formulas that don't take into account, as I think it should, the median income levels of a particular community, it primarily looks at the grant list levels. And so that is problematic when, again, we're trying to budget properly, and a new mandate comes that requires a lot of additional materials, reading program materials, and we get a small grant for that, which never would cover all the costs. The last example, but I could give many more, is the HVAC requirements, both for the grant that will only receive a 29% reimbursement if we were to be able to achieve HVAC upgrades in all of our elementary schools, but also, it has extreme costs for these HVAC reviews that now we're mandated to do. So we estimate every five years about $200,000 to do the HVAC reviews. It's probably going to be more than that as we try to achieve air conditioning. We don't have air conditioning in this school, or any of our four K4 elementary schools. So we've applied for the grant. Part of the requirement for the grant is to already have a referendum passed and money obligated. The way the grant's timeline, timeline is, we are not, although we've applied for it, we're not going to be able to get that grant, because we don't have the funding already, you know, promised. And so this will be our second time that we apply, but our funding cycle is just different from what the state's cycle is for grants, applying for those grants. We're really struggling to implement the excessive number of mandates that require additional staffing, consultant see costs, often equipment, supply costs, professional development costs, including the need to, at times, reduce the school day for professional development opportunities, just to cover the mandates that we're being asked to do and to do well. We always want to do everything we can to implement things with excellence and commitment, but it really is stretching us quite a bit. The timing, and at times, what appears to be like an overreach into our classrooms with our teachers, is really taking, in some ways, the authority away from this board. And that is something that this board takes very seriously. So I just ask that, you know, in all that you do, you think about these things, because just in, since 2015, there have been approximately 125 statutory mandates that have been added or amended for school districts, public school districts. So, you know, we're really hoping to not have as many next year. We spend our summers, Kim Scott, myself, our administrators, planning to implement all of these in such a short, in short order, very quickly, often without any funding. I will give one more example of not a mandate, but a funding source. The excess cost grant is there to help with any individuals whose education costs more than four and a half times our per pupil allocation, anything over that, we are, we provide, we receive a grant from the state called the excess cost grant, and in recent legislation, you, I believe, thought you fully funded it. We are now finding that it is not fully funded, that the estimate was off. So although your intent was to fully fund the excess cost grant, and, you know, in many districts getting much more than they had in the past, because the promise was that we'd get 100% reimbursement, once we hit four and a half times, anything above that, we'd get 100%, we have never received 100%. Usually, it's around 70% or less. And we thought, great news, we're going to be getting more funding, more reimbursement, this is wonderful, and we thank you for putting more money in the budget for it. But I think the estimate, unfortunately, was off, so now we're starting to receive news that we're getting less than what districts had planned on. And so in our budget, which we will be going through in February, we put our budget together, and then we reduce the budget by what we think we're going to get in excess costs. So we actually underfund our budget, knowing that we're going to get funding, excess cost grant funding. And when that doesn't come through in the ways that we thought it was, and all of Connecticut districts do the same thing, then we're really in a difficult position in the middle of a budget year. And so I would just ask you to look into the excess cost grant. I would love, one day, for that to be fully funded, as promised, but that is something, that's an area that, just recently, last week, was brought to superintendent's attention, that it would be less than what we thought we were going to receive. So I wanted to bring that up. And with that, I will, I will stop and open it up.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to our colleagues on the board. Any questions of our legislative representatives? You have an opportunity here.
Before we lose the moment, I just have one quick thing, and this will probably be small comfort to you, Kathy, but it is somewhat. So my understanding is that the, one of the things that the Education Committee is planning to do this time, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Representative, is to institute a mandate relief work group. And all of these issues that you brought up, and many more, I'm sure, will hopefully be considered by this mandate relief work group. Don't get too excited, it's not going to change things, you know, next week, but, you know, we've been hearing about this for a long time. So hopefully, they will dig into some of these things, and start to make some changes, and get you some actual relief, since that's the name of the group, mandate relief. So I'm just, you know, it's not falling on deaf ears.
And we talk, so I always appreciate that you pick up the phone and you listen when things come up. And, you know, I'm very involved at the state level with my own organization, CAPS, so I really do try to do whatever I can, as superintendent, to have Farmington's voice heard on various committees. I'm part of several of these statewide committees that make decisions. You know, often, in legislation, they'll say, well, let's start a work group. You know, and I'm always saying, yes, I will be there, because...
Are you going to be part of this group?
That, I haven't heard of any call to have a representative from CAPS on there, so I will definitely be listening and waiting for that email, because I'm very interested in this topic.
Since I'm on the Ed Committee, there's been discussion about that, but there's nothing, I have received no information that will actually be happening. We're hopeful, but until it's, we're in, this year, it's committee-led bills, so it's not individual members are submitting. So it has to come from, essentially, the ranking and chairs. There has been talk that we're going to have, look at the mandates, but I have not received any information that it's actually going to happen.
So I'll make a deal with you, Representative. If you push the ranking members to institute this work group, I will push the chairs.
I think that we can, the tag team on that, and I am cognizant, as a former college dean, of the problems of mandates coming down without funding. I don't particularly care for them that much, because I think it's better, the more local, I think the better outcome you get, which is when I pushed for returning cursive to the model curriculum. It is strongly suggested, I'm a big fan of cursive, first precision instrument we use. I don't want the kids getting to high school holding precision instruments like that. But it is strongly suggested, wasn't a mandate, because by mandates cost, and some school systems that's already there, they're doing the job, they don't need the extra cost. Hopefully, we can get the mandate situation under control. I do know we did, one, we did on financial literacy, it was mandated, and that kind of got strong support across the board because of the lack of financial literacy across the board in the country. So I think members of Congress should have to take financial literacy, but that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Bad room shop. So we're trying, the number of members on the Education Committee are cognizant of it. Unfortunately, when things come through, if you end up with a majority that feels it's going to be a mandate that's coming out as a mandate, so the more, anything coming down the pipe, that you can, in public hearings, let people know how much. I can say it on a full, in committee meeting, but it really gets, I think, a better response from the professionals, if you have a chance to do the public hearings. I think it'll have a little bit more gravitas with the other members of the Education Committee than, because we tend to, rightly or wrongly, you have partisanship, all of that stuff, and it is what it is. So I think that can be more reinforced, because I did not hear a lot of that during the public hearings. So that would be helpful in pushing back against the mandates, more from the public, saying, we're, especially the school systems, they're doing a good job, so that those in Hartford understand what the cost is going to be. We discussed earlier about the literacy legislation that came through. When that was passed, there was a waiver in that, and the expectation from the members in the committee was that any school system that was at standard or above would be applying for the waiver, and that should go through, and we found that only two school systems have been approved. So it's not coming out, the outcomes are not what we're expecting, and there seems to be a separation between legislative intent and administrative implementation. So that would be my suggestion, and any help on that, because with the professionals in the public hearings, I think it has more weight than just other members of the legislature.
Thank you. My Angela, we call you, you had your hand up.
I did. I was going to go along with the adequate funding theme that Kathy brought up, and I think she brought up some good points about state mandates that aren't funded. Another thing I was looking into, although it's not a mandate, it's a voluntary program, it's the Open Choice Program. We know Farmington was one of the founding towns for that, and we are great members of it. But if my math is right, from what I was researching, I think the highest tier of reimbursement for a town is $8,000 per pupil, whereas, we know here, I believe, if my math is correct, that's less than half of what we spend on a pupil. So to me, it just seems like, since that's such a great program, and it has such a good value to towns, that the state would want to incentivize not only Farmington, but, you know, other towns to want to participate more, that you would want to give them more adequate funding, so that that doesn't become a financial, you know, the financial hardship doesn't deter people from wanting to participate, but rather encouraging more people to participate by providing more funding. And if the state is so passionate about it, which I believe they are, I would think that would be, I don't know, to me, a no-grainer of something, that they would want to fund more. So would love to hear, you know, a voice of that in Hartford, too, for any capacity that you could.
$1,000 reimbursement?
I believe it's a tiered program, and the tier, if you're, the total number of open choice students is 4% or more of your total population, that maxes out at 8,000 per student, but it's tiered, so I think it's from like, you know, 2,000 to 8,000. I think we're right around the 4% mark, so we get 8,000, but you know, that's not what we spend on our students, so...
So we're always around the 3%, just so, and that's 6,000 per student.
Okay, so yeah, less.
Any other questions? Thanks, Angela, those are good questions. Any other questions? Nadine?
Just as we're going into the budget season, I think it is a concern that did pop up around the excess cost funding going down, so I'm hoping that some way, Mike, you can look at sharpening the pencil, or looking at the calculation and bringing that up, because it will impact our budget, and I'd hate to see that we have to cut things to offset that cost, so appreciate that.
Beth?
So another thing that you've heard before, Mike, and we've talked about it, but I'll bring it up again, and Kathy mentioned it, state funding, different kinds of grants, whether it's construction reimbursement, other kinds of grants that are available, often doesn't take into account, we feel like the formula for Farmington just doesn't work the way it should, and doesn't really, isn't really based on a true reflection of our community and the needs. So when we talk about median income, English as a, you know, a second language, or English language learners, free and reduced lunch, it just doesn't seem to be a comprehensive formula. So I know you've heard that before, but if there's anything that can be brought up around a more equity, a more equitable view of a community in determining what we qualify for, for some of this funding.
So Kathy mentioned that earlier.
It goes mostly by grant lists?
Much of it is heavily weighted by grant lists, which we are very fortunate, we have an excellent town planner, and, you know, we have done a great job when it comes to our grant list and attracting businesses, which offsets, you know, if you have 30% of your taxes coming from businesses, that's very helpful for the residents. So we've been very, very fortunate in Farmington that we have a very healthy grant list, we have lots of businesses coming in, and it's a very friendly place for businesses, and a very friendly place for families, so that's all amazing. But when a grant is, or these formulas are heavily weighted on the grant list part, and not really considering the median income in a community, it just seems like that's not the right formula, and maybe it should be more heavily weighted on the median income, because it's everyone's ability to pay, you know, and I've been on several committees related to this, and, you know, it remains kind of the same formula, no matter how many committees are working on it. And so it would be, I think, important to start to look at the changes that are happening across Connecticut, and how we can more adequately fund public education from the state level. And, you know, that percentage of what we pay versus the state, it just seems like, at the state level, it's getting less for a Farmington, and then it becomes the local taxpayers paying more of their, you know, of the share of that public education, which, you know, we're hoping, over time, to, you know, receive more adequate funding here in Farmington for education.
So I can't guarantee you that you're going to get an increase in the reimbursement, such as what we were able to accomplish for the high school project, which is significant, but we can definitely, and we should take a look at that. And I know this is not news, but it's time to, it's time to, you know, to do something about it.
Yes, and I mean, the high school increase in reimbursement funding was phenomenal, Mike. I mean, we appreciate so much what all of you have done, because we're able to deliver a high school which was promised, and that was really essential, that we got that extra additional funding, so we appreciate it so much.
It'd be great if we could do that in all these areas, but don't get too excited, but we're going to try, but I will bring it up, definitely.
Any questions over there? All right. Well, then, let me just, first of all, thank you both for coming tonight. Appreciate you coming to speak to us and listen to our concerns and our questions. Kathy does such a great job of kind of summarizing the challenges that we're facing as a suburban Board of Education that's actually successful in what we do, in terms of teaching our students and providing a high-quality public education, and I think underscores the challenge, frankly, in placing the burden of public education on local communities and local taxpayers when the curriculum and what's being taught, to some degree, comes from Hartford. And so with the understanding that a lot, what, some of what we teach in Farmington is from Hartford, is asked, is placed upon, and we'll do it, we're going to do a great job, and Kathy and her team will do a phenomenal job of incorporating that into our local curriculum, and continues to keep our curriculum at the highest level of any community in the state of Connecticut. But nevertheless, that is a reality, that places a burden on things you might otherwise want to do, where costs are bringing in staff, things of that nature, that place a significant burden on property tax, you know, the property tax base. We're mindful of that. So we just, as you go about your work at Hartford, please keep in mind that those decisions have real-world and real economic impact for a community like ours. So thank you for coming and seeing us tonight, and we wish you the best of luck in this upcoming session.
I appreciate it. I don't want to belabor this, but I do have to ask two questions, only because I was just looking the other day at the CAE, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education priorities, and two things jumped out at me. The kindergarten start date, you know, the change, is that going to be a problem for Farmington, or is that going to be, is that something that's, you have well in hand? And I have one other question.
Well, we had to quickly just become very, very organized in that area, because it was a big change. I think in my work with other superintendents, there are some concerns around that whole idea that if a family, if their child turns, is, it doesn't turn five by September 1, they would have, and they really want their child to go to school, and they really want them in kindergarten, that they would have to, first, write a letter saying that, and then, second, that they would, their child would have to go through some assessment. It's very hard to have an assessment for four- and five-year-olds that adequately would assess the developmental level of a child, because a child is, there's just so many things about a child, that saying one test could determine that is very difficult for us as educators. And we, at times, are afraid that it will, it could create a situation that's not equitable across the board. I think all superintendents are very worried about this. So we're, we're approaching this very open-minded, very family-focused, very student-focused, with an equity lens, to make sure that we're making, you know, quality decisions with families when it comes to this legislation. I think it's, again, an example of an unfunded mandate, because we do need to have staffing available to do this testing over the summer, and, you know, after school, and things like that. So there were, I think, again, a good intent, but many unintended consequences as a result. So we're going to see how this plays out. Kim really is the point person for this, and knows so much more about it. I don't know if you want to say anything, or...
Just one piece of it that I would add, is that there have been countless hours spent in conversation with our neighboring districts, trying to align our approach to this possibility of assessment and exception to a rule. It causes a lot of anxiety, are our families going to think that one district is being harder than another? There are just so many worries and unintended consequences to what seemed like a very smart idea to change the entrance date, but the implementation of it is what kind of gets out of hand.
Any other question you have?
Sorry, giggling, but I was in the meetings when that occurred, and one of the other parts of this that you're not dealing with is the pre-K and nonprofits, and a number of these issues were raised in committee, and it still got through, so I'm aware, and it's a problem beyond just for you, but there's multi-layers and ramifications to this policy change that are going to be dealt with. I think the one that is getting the most attention is not the assessment issue, but the impact, especially the nonprofits and the pre-K providers, and the issues regarding the date change, and its impact on federal monies coming in and whatnot. So I am going to kind of assume, and again, I have not seen what the committee is going to deal with, but my gut is telling me that's the area that is going to be dealt with as a priority, because it, the dollar figures are going to be a lot larger, and I'm not minimizing what the school boards are going through, but the... And I'm not minimizing what the school boards are going through, but the dollar issues are probably going to be larger on the pre-K side than on the assessment side, as problematic as for you. So I'm assuming that's, I mean, you have to almost look at it as a triage. That's the, going to be the first and foremost issue on that. And I'm just mentioning that so that you're aware that that's probably where the attention's going to go first because it does come in conflict with the way the federal money's coming in for pre-K programs. So that was an unintended consequence that was not foreseen by the majority of, on both sides of the aisle on this issue, so just so that you're aware where we're probably going to end up putting our emphasis immediately.
One other question, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, just one other thing and then again, I'm just, I try to be respectful. I know, you know, these organizations take a lot of time to, to put these things together. So I'm presuming and hoping that this problem exists in other districts, but not necessarily in Farmington. Training and hiring and retention of, of teachers, particularly diverse teacher workforce. Is that a problem? Is that for Farmington or, or not?
So this is something we focus on for a very long time here in Farmington. Part of the challenge is that it's, the pool of diverse candidates is a small pool and we're all trying to recruit that small pool of educators who are interested in coming to suburban school districts. So, you know, again, Kim, it's your night because Kim's working diligently and has been for many years and we've had some great success, but I don't think any of us are satisfied with where we are. But it is a situation where we're all working, every district is working on diversifying faculty and staff. And so we?
Is there something that we could be doing at the state level to make it easier for you or to make it better? What could we do?
There are a number of things. One that comes to mind immediately is working on the pathway to certification in Connecticut from candidates coming from out of state. It's a pretty cumbersome, difficult process, a lot of seemingly unnecessary hoops to jump through and it deters, I mean, we've gone to recruitment fairs in Massachusetts and Baltimore and Washington DC. And, you know, graduates look and say, but how hard is it for me to transfer my certification to Connecticut? And we try to convince them, we'll, we'll be there, you know, to walk them through the process, but it, they're, it's challenging. So that's one thing. And another is, I said this recently at a meeting, we'd like to see some data on educator preparation programs in the state, you know, what, what is the pool, as Kathy was saying, looking like? Are there particular institutions who themselves are doing a great job of recruiting a more diverse pool of, of, you know, eager young educators to go out into the workforce? But the state is asking, I feel as though the state is asking us to do work that they're not doing themselves to try to support us and, you know, there's good intentions there and a lot of positive will, but perhaps some sort of committee or again, like Kathy, I'd be happy to participate in any kind of statewide effort to look at this issue and think together, how can we pool our resources? How can we learn more about what the, the challenges are together? The state for many years, through our RESCs, has sponsored Diversity Recruitment Fair. We, we put on ours, our Sunday best when we go to those fairs, to use an old expression. And we, you know, we really try to recruit, but the pool of candidates who attend those fairs is very minimal. And here we all are as eager districts. So again, it's sort of like asking us to do, to show our good efforts through this mandate, recent mandate of, of developing and increasing educator diversity plan and submitting it to the state without, like, I'm not sure if we're all just trying so hard to achieve something that's not really achievable at the moment. And rather than creating strategic plans on paper, could we have a, a working action group to try to think about the root causes of, of the problem itself?
I think another issue that's well beyond us is housing. You know, Kim has brought to my attention programs that we could bring candidates to Connecticut for summer internships, but they have nowhere to live here. They can't, you know, it's very difficult if you're in college to afford housing here. And we have been trying to think of ways to talk to different places to try to find some housing. And I think that is a challenge when you're coming from out of state to come to Farmington or to Connecticut. The housing is more costly here. It would, I remember when I was in Greenwich, one of our biggest problems was that no, none of our teachers really could live in Greenwich. We really struggled with housing there and so they were all coming from, whether it was New York or out of town, which there was a lot of traffic. It was very challenging for our educators, but I would say it's a statewide issue. So trying to find, you know, housing that's affordable for educators, I think would be very helpful.
Just on how we're finding attracting STEM, sped and our educators?
So, you know, I, we have our special education director who's here, our special services director. You know, I, I think in Farmington as far as parapreparat educators and training, we were, I, I think we were just very fortunate that we already had seen a need to increase the days of work for our paras before the mandate came for additional training for paras. So we were a bit ahead of the curve. So we're, we were easily able to address that mandate that came where there was additional, you know, paraprofessional training, which we believe in. We are very happy to provide training and they are critical to our work every day. We're so fortunate to have an extremely talented, dedicated group of paraprofessionals here in Farmington. So that hasn't been a big issue for us, but, you know, we're always trying to seek out additional time for, you know, more training and involving our paraprofessionals in our faculty training whenever our faculty is engaged in that type of professional development. It just doesn't always work out contractually, but we were able to achieve an additional day of work for our paraprofessionals so that they could come in a day prior to students and be provided training and prepare for their student, to welcome their students on the first day of school, not start with their students on the first day of school. So we were able to achieve that. I don't know if Scott or Kim want to add anything else?
Yeah, thanks guys. Want to hear it from the kids before?
Yeah, no, one thing, real quick. I never served on Board of Education, but I am convinced that it is the toughest job in local government and you do it as volunteers and I really appreciate it. And I'm not just saying that because it sounds good. It is the toughest job in local government. You deal with all these issues and you deal with them thoughtfully and we're lucky to have all of you. So I just, you're always complimenting us. I want to return the compliment.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time, fellas. Thanks so much for coming to see us tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Second?
Any discussion? No changes, revisions, additions? Okay, all those, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the January 8th, 2024 Board of Education regular meeting minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the preliminary special services budget.
Yes, so each year, our Director of Special Services provides an overview of programming for special services and the budget needs for that department. This is, gives you a little insight prior to our budget workshop. And we're really thrilled that our director is here today, Ms. Seamus. She's going to come on up over to this microphone here, sit right next to Scott, and give you an overview of where things are right now. Special services is an area that can change quickly. So we give you an insight now and then you'll see like the final recommendations when we go through the budget workshop in February.
Welcome.
Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you to the board for the continued support of special education and we appreciate everything you do for the support of our students and our families in this town. So again, thank you for everything and welcoming, welcoming me, especially into this district. It's been my first year here, so thank you all for that. My full presentation was provided to you guys earlier in the week. It's in the board packet, so you guys can peruse that as you want. So I'm just going to have a few of my slides that I have on here. So the first slide that I'm going to go over with my brief overview is that, you know, the special services department remains committed to the alignment of the vision of the global citizen. Some of the main focuses on is that we're striving for excellence in instruction and excellence in programming. All will be fiscally responsible. The proposal that I put forward to date together in this presentation and in this proposal responds to increased special education related service needs at elementary and middle school levels, provides appropriate staffing, materials and program for all students that require special services, and provides continuation of comprehensive special services programming. These are the main focuses of the three areas that I looked at in my budget. Areas of focus that align to these proposals were personnel and academic excellence for all inclusion. So what I looked at in these areas were high quality inclusion work and a strategic professional development plan. So when I came to this district, I wanted to take a long, hard look at what we were doing for our work here in our district. So I wanted to take a look at our inclusion work, our resource work, all right? I also want to take a look at our social, emotional development and our programming. And I also wanted to take a look at our transition work. Kathy touched on that a little bit earlier in the day, the evening I should say, around our 18 to 22 programming. That's been a big transition for us as well, too. We have a lot of non-funding mandates that we have to work towards in regards to that. So along with our professional development plan, we really need to focus on pre-K all the way to 22 and looking at continuous services all throughout those years. The next one I wanted to focus on was building independence and empowering our kids to take ownership of their own learning. I take a look at, we're going to take a look at a lot of our students working towards their, building their self-independence and also not relying on other adults all the time in the building as well, too. Trying to build resilience with our paraprofessionals, trying to, you know, train our paraprofessionals to step back as well, too, train our staff to step back as well, to, to take a step back and move forward with, you know, teaching them how to build their independence and create other opportunities for the students to be empowered in their own learning. I also wanted to focus on skills and strategies and self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision making. These all align with the focus areas of our vision for the department. We will need to continue to work on our mental health support. This is really, a really important part of our everyday district work. We need to focus on continuing with the quality interventions. We utilize a great resource in the care team and their expertise that we work with on an everyday basis. We are focusing on appropriate evaluations, appropriate consultations with our outside vendors, moving forward with, you know, supporting our, our programming in district, but also getting our consultations out of district as well, too. And also parent partnering with outside agencies and providers to offer additional supports to our students, our families. So it's not just about what we're providing in the district, but what we also can provide our families outside of the district with outside agencies as well. Lastly, around excellence in programming, I was lucky to come into a district with great programming and I just want to continue that programming. So the commitment to continue with the quality of programming across the district, continue to commit to that high level of staffing, that high level of support in those programs, and commitment to a high level of training for staff. You know, we want to keep our staff here, we want to keep our staff and our retention should be good. So we want to make sure we provide them with a great training and a great ability to stay here in district and, you know, work with our most vulnerable students. I think this slide really sums up nicely what Farmington Public Schools offers the students here. Comprehensive pre-K 12 special ed programming, all right? So we take a look at the first column here. It's a nice slide that shows us all the way from the beginning of when students walk into these buildings, all the way to the very far slide when the students are leaving this district. So when we go through these slides, we have collaborative pre-Ks. We have two of those classrooms in Noah Wallace. We have resource room and academic supports all throughout the district, pre-K through 12. We have mental health services, the care team I spoke about earlier, all right? Speech and language supports and health services, BCBA supports. We have two BCBA's that do a phenomenal job in this district. We're looking to partner with St. Joe's in the near future, a possibility of trying to bring in some additional staff as well, too, to help us in that area. Occupational therapy and physical therapy, again, areas that we provide services through. This is where we really grow in our next slides, our next section. This is where our programming really comes into play. We have great programming in this district. The programs that we have in district, the SLCs, are, are great programs, you know, walking. When I first came here for, for my first site visits, just seeing the amount of programs and seeing the amount of dedication that these staff had to the programming here was something that really drew me to this district. The SLC is our specialized learning center. We have one of those in a pre-K here in Noah Wallace. We have grades K through four. We have two of the SLCs at Union and we have one in West District. Our one in West District actually handles a lot of our students that might have multiple disabilities because it was one floor. So some of our students that might have multiple disabilities, wheelchair bound, things like that, that might need that. That's where that program is housed because of the mobility issues in this one floor, easy accessibility. We have another SLC at IAR and then we have a sales program in an FHS, one at FHS. The sales program is a little bit different. The sales program is succeeding in academic and living skills. So this program is a hybrid between SLC and kind of resources. Students that really kind of need a little bit more level of support, but don't quite need the highest level of support as an SLC. So really identifying some additional support moving forward. And then again, we also have two SLCs at the high school. And again, you see the, you see the continuous services all the way from the beginning, all the way from pre-K, all the way up to grades nine through 12. The last two areas, social, emotional learning. We have the CE program, again, here in Noah Wallace, continuous services. We start off with our SEL programming here in the district at our lowest level. We have one classroom here. Moving up to West Woods, we have one in that building. We have one at IAR and then we have a STEP program at FHS. The STEP program is as clinical as you're going to get before you exit out to a possibility of a therapeutic day program. So this, the fact that we have these programs in district really support our students fiscally and, you know, academically and socially emotionally. And I think they've done an amazing job with the staff and the students in this district. And then lastly, you know, some of the other programs that we have some support with, we have the pre-K multiple disabilities program I talked about in West District. Outside consultants, so example, you've probably heard of CCSN. That's an outside agency that we've worked with. And also we have Farmington Valley Transition Academy that we brought Park with Simms Berry with. And again, with a lot of new transitional services that we continue to work with. So that being said, with our programming, the budget that I proposed is that I was requesting a .2 FTE for Noah Wallace as a pre-K special education teacher. That is a current position that has already exists. It's responding to an increase in students requiring service and a loss of grant funding. So it's shifting from grant money over to just a general budget. A .5, West District Multiple Disability Special Education Teacher, again, an existing position. .5 position moved to the budget due to the loss of grant funding. .5 FTE, IR social worker, again, this is a new position. And again, it's to support the adequate caseload and SEL student and family needs. IR is a large building and it's just, it's just a staff and a staff in a building that students need that extra level of support. And there's another .5 position over at East Farms that we were thinking about the possibility meet that need. The last is the paraprofessionals, an increase of .4. This is probably the most volatile area in our budget. Paraprofessionals can be very volatile in our district. We have students that sometimes will move into our district that have these, already have hours identified in there long after our budget has already been. have hours identified in there, long after our budget has already been decided. So we are constantly trying to, you know, maneuver ourselves around, take data, create independence, move students off, build independence, and shift things around. But this is a very volatile area that we continue to literally have to move through. But again, with the existing numbers that we have, I felt like this was an appropriate request with the budget that we had moving forward. So again, I know that there's a lot more information about all of our highlights, all the strengths of our program, and the variety of other things that are in this presentation. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
General, what's the average FTE cost for a paraprofessional?
Probably mid-30s.
Like 35, I should, something like that, okay. For our budget session, thanks. Any questions on the table, guys? I mean, this is our first glance at everything, and the materials here are actually pretty extensive, and I thank you for that. If there are no questions tonight, that's fine, doesn't mean you're not going to have an opportunity to ask questions on Saturday, the first Saturday in February. So, and I'm guessing you guys are going to have more time to reflect on the materials that we have here, so don't worry if you have any questions tonight. I think we're good, then.
Thank you so much, Seamus. We appreciate it.
By the way, Seamus, that slide you put up there, where you get the previous one, where you kind of, the silos of all, it's the first time I've ever seen that in 15 years. That was fantastic, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the preliminary professional staffing report.
So again, each year, our superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Kim Nguyen, who oversees curriculum instruction, professional staffing, and human resources, gives you a preview of the professional staffing needs for the 24-25 school year. This is the professional staffing report, so certified staffing. She will provide a very quick overview and be available to answer any questions. This is, the largest part of our budget would be our staffing on the certified side and then the non-certified, but we're going to focus tonight on the certified side. Okay? Thank you, Kathy.
Yes, again, I just want to say that this isn't purely look, a preliminary look at the staffing budget. And I thought I might say a couple words about how we go through this process to arrive at the recommendations. It really starts very early on in November. I travel to each school and meet with the principals individually and talk about things like projected enrollments and school programming priorities, class size, programmatic changes and enhancements that they're thinking about. At the elementary levels, we're very mindful of class size and class size projections. You know, we typically have not been a district that is experiencing declining enrollment. We've been experiencing increases in enrollment, but we try to be very cautious and careful about anticipating what our class sizes might look like in the coming year. And so you see embedded in this report, an elementary, school by school and by grade projection of what those class sizes might look like. And in the end, you know, principals make their final presentations to the central office team when we travel to each school for budget meetings. Even at that point, there, not every request for staffing that a principal brings forward makes it into this budget because from a high-level point of view at central office, we have to make decisions about what the priorities are for the coming year. So what I'm going to show you and put forward to you is likely to be what the superintendent's budget will include at our February workshop. In the opening paragraph of the report itself, I've also given you a preview of the major budget drivers, not all of which are really focused on staffing, but in general here, two of those drivers are priorities in this staffing report. And I want to be sure, I don't think it's even on this slide, I think it's on the next slide. I put a little, an insert box here just to be sure everybody understands what we mean by an FTE, which is a full-time equivalent. And when you see things like, you know, a .4 or a .6, it really, I'll give you an example. At the high school, teachers teach five classes, so someone per day, that's what a full-time teacher would teach. And so someone who only teaches three classes, if we have a need for someone to come and teach three classes a day, that person would be a .6 FTE position. It just gives you a sense of how we think about that. I know it can be a little bit confusing. So if you go to the slides with the chart here, I'll just talk through these, these new positions that are really focused on academic excellence and equitable opportunity for all students. Earlier this year, Veronica Rusick, our Director of Curriculum, was here giving you a preview and an up-to-date look at English learner population in Farmington and how much that has been growing and the urgent need we have to provide adequate services for those students. So you see here a request for an additional .5 English language learner teacher. And on the next slide, it's combined with a half-time position that we currently have. So it will take the person that we currently have in half-time and bring that person to be a full-time professional. The next, if you go back, the next position on this slide is we're excited about the possibility that we can bring back culinary and that we would be requesting a culinary teacher. We are going to have a beautiful new facility, and we have strong student interest in this programming, and so it's time for us to think about staffing that position. The grade five teacher proposed here is in response to growing enrollment. We already know the numbers we have in grade four, and so the need for an additional teacher in grade five would keep class sizes at a reasonable level. The same is true for the requested position here at Noah Wallace for an additional elementary teacher to respond to enrollment projections. We were, when we looked very carefully at scheduling and staffing, we were able to realize a savings in a world language position currently at West Woods. We would be able to reduce by .6 at West Woods in world language, which helps to offset these requests. The .5 special education social worker position at IAR is what Seamus just spoke about in terms of the need there. So in terms of new positions, we would be requesting a 3.4 FTE. And on the next slide, you see those positions that are existing, people, you know, in these positions currently. But when we experienced some reductions in the budget last year, we were able to continue to, to support students in these areas by shifting these positions onto our ESER grant funding that we had available to us. But, you know, as you know, that, that those dollars are coming to a close, if you will. And so we are still in need of all of the positions that are represented here and requesting that they be shifted back into the operating budget, which would mean an additional 1.7 FTEs. That's it.
Any comments, Kathy?
No, I think that you can get a flavor of some of the themes that you'll hear over and over again when we're presenting the budget. This is one of the big themes, given, you know, this represents 1.7 FTE. There are going to be other areas that are not in staffing that are coming off ESER. And so, you know, we had a number of budget reductions last year, we had ESER funds, we were able to move these FTE over, but now we have to move them back onto the operating budget. I thought, when Kim and I talked, it was important to show you what positions are existing and what are new positions, but all of them, you know, are going to reflect in the operating budget. So to get a, give you a preview is always very important. So, you know, if anyone has any questions, we'll really be happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, so I just have one question, and it's just maybe the way in which I'm looking at it. So the, the world language, where you're saying it's a reduction, is that, is it my...
It's a reduction.
A reduction, but it's under the new position, so.
Well, I think what Kim is trying to show is that by having a reduction, it offset the FTE increase in that, in the new position. So, you know, we're always looking for efficiencies and, and, you know, we're very fortunate. Sometimes we're looking at staffing from a point of view of creating a better learning experience for our students and then, but as a good unintended consequence, there's an efficiency in staffing. So Kim is showing the new positions, but they're offset by a reduction in a, in a position.
So is it, sorry, follow-up question to that?
Yeah, sure.
So is it safe to then assume through this that the, at West Woods, world language is, is not going to be impacted in that because it's...
It's a scheduling efficiency, not a programmatic efficiency.
Okay, perfect, thank you, thank you for that.
Any other questions?
The culinary teacher that you mentioned, and I should maybe know this, but for my application, is the new FHS facility equipped with the hardware that would be needed for that class, so like ovens and all of that? That's already baked into the new FHS? Like, there's a room for that, it has everything?
State of the art.
Okay.
As a way of, as an institutional background, about 12 years ago, 13 years ago, we had culinary at the high school. And due to budget constraints, we had to cut it. And it was a very, very emotional night. In fact, that was the latest we ever had a board meeting, we didn't go home till four o'clock that night. Because we had to cut it. This is something we've wanted to do for a decade, to bring it back, because there is such student demand for it. So that's where that comes from.
No, that makes, I was just wondering if there was an additional cost for like all that equipment then, or if it's like, that's, so that's already taken care of? This would just be for the actual, like, teacher to bake?
Yes.
My understanding is the interest is already quite substantial.
Do we have a sense of the level of interest and whether or not we'll be able to accommodate, you know, what the numbers might be initially at this point?
Well, kids are signing up.
We won't be able to accommodate. We have 160 kids have already signed up, and we are through two grades, so the interest is amazing. And that's just like preliminary culinary one, culinary two with vague descriptions. They are very exciting.
It's a great program. I've been hearing from the community that it's...
It's something that we really should try to protect and keep going. We brought, we worked very hard to get it back, so we want to keep it going if we can. All right, round saves. Do you have any other questions? I'm happy to hear them right now, otherwise, this is a good spot for you guys to familiarize yourself with the new board members. As we go through the budget book on that Saturday, we'll be talking about all this stuff in greater detail, so. We're coming. Thank you. Kathy? Oh, next up on the agenda is professional appointments and resignations.
So we have one resignation in this month, or this meeting's report.
Okay. Kathy, that's, this is not the first time I've seen a special ed teacher resign. Is there, are you noticing anything out of the usual, out of the ordinary with that? Or is it, can you kind of give us a little bit of a flavor of what that's all about?
How Kim could speak more, because we are seeing some, a trend that we have not seen in the past. Other districts are seeing the same trend. A lot of movement during the school year, which is highly unusual, or at least we've never experienced that before. I know other districts have, but it seems like it's including all districts now. There are many positions that are posted across Connecticut because it is a shortage area. So it could be that I want to be closer to home, and there's a position in my town, and it's available right now. We typically wouldn't have postings in the middle of the year for teaching positions, but this is a new world that we were facing after COVID, where we see lots of positions being posted in shortage areas and beyond, and then people moving districts pretty regularly throughout the school year. I don't know, Kim, if you have anything to add to that?
Well, I would just say we are collecting exit survey data to try to get a better sense of the sort of the categories of why people are leaving. And I know that special education demands are high.
Sure.
And we expect excellence, and we should. And so it is, I really feel for teachers in that area because they, you know, we have new programming that comes from the state, like CTZs and how, the challenges of, of data input and systems that aren't really quite working properly yet. So it's just another layer of expectation. So we're trying to support people as much as we can, but sometimes that glow of, well, maybe the grass is greener somewhere else pulls someone away.
Thank you for that. Okay, next on the agenda is deeper learning update.
I think you had a great webinar of it tonight in our introduction, but really wonderful updates from our schools on students having opportunities to choice and engage in learning that's aligned to their interests and their backgrounds, and so many, many exciting updates that I welcome the board and the community to.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item seven of the agenda, unfinished business, 7A budget impact, budget update. Scott?
Just a few updates, some of it is along the same themes that, that we've discussed over the last several months, including just a few weeks back. We're continuing to deliberate on the transportation RFPs. I expect our negotiations team to keep that together. Last I reported out, we had four interviews that were conducted in early January, where we were able to go deeper into aspects of the proposals that we received. Like I said, negotiations is continuing to review the proposals, and we hope to have more news for the board soon. You know, at, you know, early on, I remember when we talked about this, we had anticipated an increase in cost upwards of 20%. And, and, you know, everything that we received was somewhere between 10 and 20, 25%. And so I think those numbers are, are right in line with what we expected in terms of what we received, and like I said, we'll be back in touch soon with a decision.
Thank you.
In addition, just a couple others. The ad hoc committee met earlier this evening, and so I expect at some point, probably in the spring, or as, as is convenient for the board, you know, we'll have some updates and feedback in terms of what that group did. You know, really appreciative of that team and the work that they did. We had a really productive meeting this evening and great discussion around some potential steps there, but that's something for us to attend to. Kathy gave a preview. We did receive news from the state regarding excess cost grant and, and our expectation to receive less than we had anticipated. We're watching that closely and will adjust accordingly. You'll see in the financial update that our special ed costs are continuing to rise. With that in mind, though, we will make the adjustments we need to, to be adaptive for whatever changes come, but it is no doubt a challenge for us and will continue to be. And we'll look forward to spending some time on Saturday, in a few weeks, as we get closer and closer, getting all the trailers and previews in the last couple of years. A real movie takes place in a few weeks, so we'll look forward to that work ahead. That's it. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Scott. Okay, next on the agenda, 7B, review the calendar, 7B and 7C, review the 24-25 school year calendar, second reading. Can I get a motion to approve the 2024-2025 school year calendar as presented for a second reading?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? One thing I would say, I want to thank Angela and I want to thank Andrea for catching a couple of typos that were on the calendar, so we made sure we had the right calendar for everyone to consider tonight. Thank you for that. No discussion here or none? Can I, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Okay, motion carries. Next item would be the calendar for 2025-2026. Can I get a motion to approve the 2025-2026 school year calendar as presented for a second reading?
Motion?
Second? Second?
Second.
Discussion, any questions, comments, or concerns? Here or none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion also carries. Thank you all. Appreciate the conversation we had at our last meeting on the subject. And I'll just indicate that, to the extent we are presented with questions concerning school closure dates in the future, we will be leaving in the policy committee, we're going to direct the policy committee to begin the process of coming up with a process on how to respond to community questions and concerns, so we can have a more clearly understood and transparent way, so if people in the community are coming forward asking for school closures, we can respond to it more effectively. So thank you, thank you all for that. All right, next, new business, item eight, item eight, yes, establishment of the Farmington High School 2024 graduation date. Kathy?
So there is some new business, and that's exactly what it is. So typically, and I'll ask Russ Chris to come up and sit right near Scott, our principal at FHS, so typically I would not bring you this request until April. That is what, when we always set the date, because that's when finally our weather starts to settle down.
April 1st.
But we have some new issues this year related to project graduation. And that issue is that we're trying to change a venue. Our parents are so amazing at the high school at planning this very important event on the night of graduation. It started to create a very safe environment for graduates on the night of graduation by having an all-night graduation party that our parents fundraise for and work so hard. We're very lucky in Farmington that they create an amazing experience for our students. But we've been looking around at different venues, and we want to make sure to lock in a date early and have a predictable graduation date and set that earlier. We are allowed to set the date earlier, as long as we set the date on our 180th day, as you know, that's a state law. And our 180th day right now is June 7th. We had June 5th, but we've had two day school closure days for inclement weather. And so it's the 7th, which is a Friday, which is something I know that would be something our parents and students like, to have something on a Friday night. Sometimes we have graduation on a Monday or Tuesday, and right now it's falling on a Friday night. So I'll have Principal Chris talk a little bit about why we're setting it earlier. I've given a little context, but you're working directly with parents related to them.
Yeah, I do think that in general, that this would be great for students and families to be able to lock in a date now as opposed to waiting to April. There are a lot of plans, as many of you know, that take place when it comes to planning for graduation number one, and for families and students to plan graduation, also obviously vacations and all that stuff, parties that come along with that. It's a really exciting time. I also think that it is kind of in, there really does seem to be a changing landscape for like project graduation parties, and there doesn't seem to be the flexibility in that we once saw in places where they were hosting graduation parties. Other districts are locking in earlier or even at the beginning of the year, and we were kind of waiting until April. As the snow days came, our graduation date would change. So that would really help us to resolve that issue as well. And again, I do think that there is a benefit to students and families, and also those of us who are, you know, planning for graduation as well, when we nail that date down in April, there is a lot of work that happens immediately as soon as it's locked in, that sets in motion a whole tickler list full of things that we need to accomplish in a pretty short amount of time. So I think this would be exciting for those of us who plan it, but especially, most importantly, for our students and families.
And just as a clarification, if we have additional closure dates, which is highly probable, we're in January, this graduation date is set, so it does not change. What does change is our end-of-school-year dates, and by having it on a Friday, it still gives us the opportunity for seniors to come back until that 180th day. Or maybe they want to finish some things up, you know, whatever they need to do, but all of our students will stay in school until the 180th day. It's just that we're setting graduation early. I will say that in the past, I've heard from parents, by not setting, when we set it in April, a lot of times it's been a real challenge for parents because they looked at the calendar and they thought, when we release the calendar, the 5th was the last day, and they start making plans. And then they don't realize that we keep pushing the graduation date out as we have school closure days, and it could be that they planned a trip. It could be that their child's leaving for military service. It could be that they're doing an internship. So there's a lot of positives by setting it early, and I will be working with the policy committee to look at, you know, when is the ideal time as we go forward for setting that date? We also are very much aware that when we set the date and we have additional closures, that we have to be very much aware that there are some students where the last few days of school are very critical for their graduation and to get to that graduation walking across the stage. So we've talked, and we're going to make all the adjustments needed to ensure that we're doing everything possible for those students who might be having a more difficult time at the end, because they might have a couple less days if we had a couple closures, and then we have graduation on the 178th day. It's allowable by state law as long as we set it on the 180th day, and if we have more closures, it happens. But we're going to graduate on the 7th, and we're going to do everything we need to do, just like we always do. But everything we need to do to ensure, you know, that students get all the support they need to walk across the stage on the 7th.
Okay, any comments or questions?
So I just have one, sorry.
Angela, you had it first.
You can go first, it's fine.
Okay, go ahead, Nadine.
So just to clarify, I think it's a great idea to set it early. Having run project graduation several times, it is challenging waiting till April 1st to get that date. But with my question, so we would, they would graduate on the 7th, and like last year, we, with snow days, we ended up not ending until the 13th. So say they would have to come back to school if, say, we had more snow days all the way up till the 180th, so it could be like the 14th, so almost a week later, and we're going to adhere to students coming back for that time period?
So, and it really, at that point, they graduated.
Yeah, okay.
They can come back.
They can or cannot?
Certainly. But if they graduated and there's no need to?
Then they don't need to.
They end on the 7th.
I like it, because exams and all.
But the kids that might need extra time, they can go 180 days and still graduate that way.
Right, I mean, we are going to work really hard to make sure on the 7th, everyone's got all the requirements. But sometimes students need to come back and they have a couple of loose ends. They still have that ability to do that if we have additional days, but 9th through 11th, they are staying. The whole 180, well, actually, K through 11th, will all be going until that 180th day, which right now is the 7th. Let's keep our fingers crossed that it remains that way for everybody, I hope.
My question was similar to Nadine, so I was going to say, like, all their testing and all major things like that would have been done already. This would just be like an excess. Yeah, I like the idea. I mean, I think in a lot of school districts, I know where I'm from in New York, like seniors finish earlier, and I think it's nicer because then they just, you know, they're not checked out, but like, you know, checked out a little bit.
They are.
So yeah, I'm all for it. I was just wondering logistically how that would work, so that makes sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, need a motion to approve June 7th, 2024, is the Farmington High School graduation date?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Graduation. All right, next item on the agenda, consideration of the Assistant Superintendent's Finance and Operations Report, approval of the December 2023 financial statement.
All right, so we will be ready to go, jumping in February after this, we're caught up with our monthly financials. The trend, you know, we just talked about this a few weeks ago when we looked at November, we did get our insurance in and had another positive month with our insurance trends there. And then we're staying on course as the year unfolds here. You'll notice that we have a projected savings in our teacher account. In turn, you see an overspending in the substitutes account, right? So as their savings for teachers on leave, the substitute account would go up there as well. You'll notice that the items that we discussed last month, store deals, supplies, transportation services, professional education services, and tuition, amongst a few others, are on track to be overspent based on what our recover faces are right now. With that, I'll just open up if there's any questions.
Anyone? Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the December 2023 financials as presented?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Okay, just double-check, any discussion at all? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, thanks, Scott. All right, item 10 on the agenda, report to the board chair. I'll be passing out the committee liaison assignments at the conclusion of the meeting. Just so, on the record, what I understand, there will be no, I'm listed as the elementary enrollment ad hoc committee appointee, but that committee has done its business. There'll be no more, that committee is essentially done. We had our last meeting tonight, and to kind of piggyback on what Scott said, we met, I think, four times, four or five times as a whole, as a committee, and then you guys met offline a bunch of times too. It started back in the fall. It was a great committee. The SLAM collaborative was, kind of did all the work for us. And we will be, we will be bringing forward to the board, Scott and Kathy will kind of work collaboratively based on the conversations we had tonight, on a couple of different options. So you'll get to see kind of all the options that were presented, and then we'll have a conversation. And then we will vote collaboratively as a board as to what recommendation we ultimately adopt. Trying to figure out how to best do that meeting, we want to make sure that as many people as possible can attend it and know about it, so we're not going to put it on an agenda anytime soon. We want to make sure it's out and people have a chance to know that it's coming down the pike. We don't want to surprise anybody with it. So more to come on that. And also, there was, we did not appoint liaison to the Town of Farmington Regional Equality Task Force, based on my conversations with our prior liaison, Nadine, the town, the council is essentially taking that committee and folding, that, yeah, committee, I guess, and folding it into another committee. So when we get further direction from the council, we'll kind of respond to how they want us to appoint to that. But right now, because we don't know what the town's doing on that, I don't want to appoint someone to a committee and that person not have any work to do. So more to come on that. And that's all I have. We see each other on Saturday, the 2nd of February for the new members. It's not that bad. It's run very well. The book is very transparent, easy to follow. You'll get it a couple of days beforehand, so you have an opportunity to kind of go through it. Understand that that's the first reading, we go through that book. So if there's stuff that comes up that day, you have an opportunity at the meeting the following Monday to raise objection, ask for things to be changed, deleted, cut, added, whatever you want to do. And we will act the following week on the actual recommended budget that we submit to the council. So we also have the trivia B on the first, right? Friday night? Second, I'm sorry, second?
The meeting?
This is the third.
Yes, budget meeting's the third, trivia's the second.
Right, sorry, sorry. So yeah, so the trivia B's the second, hope to see folks there. And with that, I have nothing further to add. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just checking.